At 7 o'clock PM. Kathy, could you please call the board?
Bean Bar.
I'm here.
Lately.
Here.
Drumel.
Here.
Gas Bar.
Here.
Locke.
Here.
Lo.
Present.
Mike.
Here.
Welcome here.
Thank you.
Chris is going to lead us in the pledge of his very last name.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which this stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Dr. Hitchens, are there any items removed from or added to the agenda for tonight?
No, there's one slight, small change in the consent agenda. Steve will walk you through that when we get to that point.
Awesome. Sad to say that our Louis White friends cannot join us tonight. We're hoping that we're going to be able to arrange for them to come in another night, but that means that we're going to jump right to our public comments. I do not have any pink sheets. Kathy, did we have anybody that wanted to make comments tonight?
No.
All right. Then we are going to jump right to our VPS partners. I would like to give a tad to the table.
Just announcements this time. First off, just to the seniors, congratulations on your upcoming graduation tomorrow night. You have to kind of keep in mind, like those of us in Montree, we've known you guys since you were like this tall, and so to see the people that you've grown into makes us so proud of everything, and we are so excited to see what you guys' future holds in store. So from all the teachers, best wishes from all of us. So congratulations. Secondly, just for the board, just so you guys know, in May, we had our officer elections for BEA, and Liz McAlpin, who is our vice president, and Mike Bryant, who is our treasurer, either ran for reelection, so we have two new officers, and our new VP is Dan Rens from the high school, and our new treasurer is Greg Fink from Overwood. And Greg is going to be coming back as treasurer again, so that will be a welcome addition back to the executive board for BEA. So thanks to Liz and Mike for their service. And while we're thanking people for service as well, the BEA wanted to thank Sue Gilrelin for doing such a fantastic job in representing our kids and representing us and the things that are happening in our classrooms, and you've just been amazing, and we're going to miss you tremendously. So thank you from the BEA very, very much. We also wanted to say a big thank you to Lisa Palacy as well for the fantastic job that she did, not only in her time in the classroom and her positions throughout the district, but as the Director of Student Services and leading the new Student Services team. She was instrumental in the most awesome things that we're doing for kids in Batavia. So we're really, really going to miss Lisa, and congratulate her on her new endeavors. And then pending board approval, we would like to say congratulations to Carrie Rue, who is taking over in that new position as well. So, and hope board approves her, because we're really excited to work with her.
Awkward.
Had to be kind of coached on that one. Like, can I say it? So pending board approval, and we'll be happy to work with her. And then one last thing, too, is I'd really like to, this summer, schedule a time to meet with all of you board members, just to have some conversations about how we can continue collaborative structures that we have started, things that we can continue to work on. And one of the things that I'd really like us to look forward to doing is to maybe kind of setting some definitions or defining the role of what the school liaison looks like for a board member. I have members all the time ask me, you know, what can we expect of the board members? And I don't know what to answer for them. So that would be really a topic of conversation that I would love for us to have this summer over a cup of coffee, just to get your thoughts, and then maybe we can hash out something that would be something consistent for everyone to know what to expect from the board members that are assigned as a school teacher.
That's awesome. We're going to be talking about that at our June retreat.
Oh, perfect.
So after that.
So we can follow up on that.
Yeah, great.
So look forward to an email from me about that, and we'll try to do those before the 4th, so sometime in those June weeks that are coming up. And I think that's it. So have a great summer, everyone, and we'll see you in June.
Awesome. Thanks, guys. All right. Our student ambassadors.
So, since we last saw you, prom happened. It was very fun. Same at post-prom at Funway. The mayor showed up to post-prom, which was really cool. And then also, last Friday, the girls' soccer team, Varsity, won regionals, which was a big deal, and everyone was really excited about that. Unfortunately, they just lost their last game. So their season's done, but they did win regionals. And then everyone that hasn't finished their school year is getting ready for finals, so things are kind of crazy. But yeah, everyone's looking forward to summer.
Yeah, and the week leading up to prom was senior week, and that was a lot of fun. I know Rent a Senior Day was my favorite. It was crazy, chaos in the hallway, if anyone has ever seen that. I'm sure you saw some on Twitter. I don't know, it was good. Good time. Yeah, I don't know, administration-wise, it was fun. Also, seniors are out of school now, which is really nice. Friday was our last day, so this morning, we had senior breakfast, which was really good, and then we had graduation practice right afterwards, and we all turned in our Chromebooks. So tomorrow is graduation, and then done. Donezo. Yep. The college announcement.
Say, you have big announcement.
You're having a bigger matter.
Yeah. I'm going to the University of Florida, and I'm studying finance. So I'm super excited.
Go seniors!
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Yes, St. Boncel.
Well, would you like to come up here for a minute?
Sure.
It is my privilege, not only because Chris has been serving for the last couple years as our ambassador, but I know Chris personally, and I'm very proud of him. And I'm not happy about his Florida. Sorry. I want it closer, but he has worked very hard, and he has represented Batavia High School and the board above and beyond. And so I wanted to present this plaque to you on behalf of the Board of Education and Administration for your two years of service. I think you've sat through some pretty interesting board meetings. You've had a few interesting experiences yourself, but again, we thank you. You've done a fabulous job, and we will miss you, so we wish you the best of luck.
Thank you.
So this is. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chris.
Thank you, everybody.
So Chris is Olivia, ready to take over as the senior?
I think so. I think she's.
You've well-trained her?
Yeah. I don't know. We'll see. I think she can do it. It's tough.
I've got it under control. Don't worry.
Thank you.
All right. Super exciting. We'll go to committee updates next. It's getting to that summertime when our meetings.
Thursday. So.
Sounds good, Chris.
I actually have a capital improvement meeting coming up on Thursday that I'm not going to be able to attend, but John is going to go in my place. Thank you very much, John. And then we selected our new student ambassador. So I don't know if I want to announce that, or if I should let Erin do that. I'll let her do that, won't she?
Wait a minute.
So she has something to do during her first committee update.
That was nice. Thank you. I don't have anything. So I was super excited at our last CAC meeting, because we were talking about a lot of our career and technical opportunities, and we have a great partnership with the Chamber, and I'm actually going to throw it to Brad to give us a 30-second update on that, because I will garble it and heal that.
Sure. So CAC got an update on some of the partnership work that we're doing. One of our great partners is the Chamber of Commerce and the executive director there. And the partnership really stemmed out of kind of a mutual need. So our students need authentic experience, work experiences, and to see what's out there in terms of careers. And businesses right now with the job market are creating people and need to create a pipeline of people to high-paying, good-quality jobs right here in our community that are often overlooked, especially in advanced manufacturing. So in working with Holly at the Chamber, what we talked about was doing a variety of things that really spur interest in students kind of broadening their perspective. If you asked a typical kid in our middle school, like, what job they wanted, you'd probably get one of like 15 answers. And we think that there's more out there, and that kids could be considering a wide variety of things. And there's lots and lots of opportunities that are in school, and we want them to be able to take advantage of that for leveraging that for the rest of their lives. So an example of the partnership, actually, today, Bulldog Plumbing partnered with our design and modeling class, and they set up a challenge where students had to use plumbing materials. So I don't even know what plumbing materials are. That's how long I've been in education, but pipes and fittings and all sorts of things to do a marble run challenge that they had designed together. They had to do the measurements and all of those pieces, so it was super exciting. And the great part about it was, they just didn't give us stuff or money. They came in, talked to our kids about what they do and what careers are out there in the field of plumbing. And this is an engineering class, and one of the exciting things, and Holly was in the meeting, was that some kids maybe want to be an engineer, and we can fulfill that dream for kids and help them on their way, but some kids, they might be a really great plumber too, and have a great career in that. And there's local businesses that really want them to be plumbers too, because it's hard to find people. So that's an example of a partnership that, to me, is really authentic of getting our kids those experiences. You know, there's other things that we're working on, including career speakers and others that are pushing into our classrooms and really helping us behind the scenes, but they can add a lot to what our students' experience is all about. But it's really taken the business community partnering with us to bring that into our curriculum to re-enhance it. So there's lots of great opportunities out there, including some internships and work experiences that we're really trying to capitalize on with the business community here in Batavia. So they've been very welcoming to us, and I think our kids have really benefited already. And I think it's an awesome opportunity for local businesses to see what great kids we have in our schools too. So mutually beneficial. So those are the types of partnerships that we're really trying to expand and offer in Batavia Public Schools. So we're going to give you a partnership update later on in a couple of months, but just to give you a little taste of what we talked about at CAC.
Thanks, Brett. I'm super excited, and I knew I would not be able to do that justice, so thank you.
I think wrap wrapped up since our last meeting for this year. We set next year's meeting schedule, and we know we have a very full plate filled with data and forecasting and projecting, and it should be awesome.
So Chris and I had the opportunity to meet with the applicants for the student ambassador position last Friday, Friday before. Many applicants, we were blown away. I mean, it was, it was a tough decision, but we're super excited. Joe Calte Geroni will be our new student ambassador. He will be a sophomore next year. So that is a little bit different than we've done in the past, but we're excited.
That's awesome.
We're super excited.
Still a two-year term?
Yes. Anything you'd want to add, Chris?
No, I think you covered all bases. Very excited.
Thanks, Erin. Erin?
Just that we're finishing up the final details for the Hall of Honor. Just, you know, put down September 18th for the parade, and the 19th for the event at B-VAC. So hopefully, everyone will come out and support the people that have been nominated to get in, and it should be another fun event, so.
Awesome. All right. Of our updates, next on our agenda is our consent agenda, which is an opportunity for us to approve a number of routine business items. All of them are detailed in the board book, so here's the big block.
Yeah, before we jump into it, real quick, in the personnel report, 5.4, I am going to be taking Timothy Pennell off of the staff hiring list. Certainly, we hope to have him on the staff hiring list the next time we meet, but I'm going to be taking him out for tonight. So let's go. 5.1 through 5.3 is the approval of the April 23rd, 2019, regular, special, enclosed session meeting minutes. 5.4 is a personnel report. A couple of things you should note on the personnel report. Number one, I want to thank the board. You do a great job in working with us on our staffing plan, and because of our process and our timing, we really believe we get the best candidates, because we get things posted very early. Hard-to-fill positions are posted usually sometime in March, and then right after our March board meeting, we start posting all of our other positions. And you'll note in here that we have many folks hired that are starting on August 12th of 2019. That's because that's the first day of work for our teaching staff, and the caliber of teachers that we're bringing in are absolutely off the charts. I will tell you, shout out to Carrie Rue and her team. You'll notice that the bulk of the hires are in student services departments, special ed. teachers, social workers, psychologists, those sorts of positions. And if you talk to any school district locally or across the state or the nation, those are all very, very hard-fill, high-priority positions, and we have dynamite people. And I would say that, again, we should continue with our process with how we hire, because we certainly get the best people now. So I thank you for that. Additionally, I'd like to note in there, and Todd stole some of my thunder, this approved, but we're super excited. We're sad to see Lisa Palacy leave for sure, but we're super excited about Carrie Rue stepping in, and she's in the personnel report. And then lastly, we're super sad to see Sue Gilrelin leave once again, but her replacement, Holly, sitting right over here. Pending board approval, she will be with us taking over very, very soon, so we're excited about those positions. So editorial aside, that's the personnel report for 5.4. 5.5 is our monthly payroll and bills. 5.6 is destruction of our closed session recordings from November 21st, 2017. 5.7 is our donations. We had three donations this month. You can click on that if anyone wants to read exactly what those were, but we do appreciate all those donations. They mean a lot to us. 5.8 is the approval of Microsoft Volume License renewal. 5.9 is the purchase of our classroom projectors. 5.10 follows suit with that with purchase of our wireless modules for our classroom projectors. 5.11 is the approval of our food service contract. 5.12, the approval of our new lunch prices. 5.13, the purchase and installation of intercom and clock systems at a couple of school buildings. 5.14 is the approval of the district consolidated grant application. And as always, we conclude with our last agenda item for this, 5.15, which is the approval of the entire consent agenda.
All right. Are there any items for further clarification or removal from the consent agenda? All right, and I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
By Rock, second by Lo. On favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, consent agenda approved. Next, we will move on to reports. I'll hand that over to Josh.
Since the last time we met, we had some FOIA requests, and as usual, we show you what those requests were and whether or not they were granted. They were all granted in this last month. Several listed. We have our treasurer's reports that are also recurring, and I would entertain any questions for either of those reports. Thank you. So I think we are ready to move on to the next, which is our last report, which means no action, and that is our Building Our Future Together update, our Phase 1 update. So we did, Sue, in one of her final acts, had, this is the Sue night, she put together some webpages on our website that talk about this, because it is quite a multi-phase process that will be taking place over the next year and a half, probably. And so they did just complete Phase 1. We asked them to come and give you an update, just as promised. They said they would be updating you regularly, so I will turn it over to the DLR Group. Thank you, Jason.
Good evening, everyone. For those who may not remember, my name's Jason Longkey with the DLR Group. Dennis Bain also with the DLR Group, and I think you know this guy.
Carrie's on vacation, the resident, so I didn't think anybody took it to the off-in Batavia School this year, but Carrie did. She's not here tonight, but will be in the future.
I wanted to share tonight, not necessarily the outcomes or findings of our Phase 1 endeavor, I want to share tonight the process in which we captured the data. Thursday and Fridays, you'll see later on in the presentation, are two very important opportunities for community members to come and learn about the things that we have learned about your facilities. So we're not going to talk about those findings, we're going to talk about our process. First, just to put some very important context to the presentation and indeed the process, you know, a traditional master plan was very different than what we do as an educational facility master plan. So it really speaks to the educational components and the adequacy of the facilities, in addition to a lot of those practical endeavors pertaining to structure and facility condition and those kinds of things. So you'll see a lot of things as we get further into the process, phases 2 and beyond, that speak directly to your education and who you are as a district and your vision for teaching and learning, and how that will impact your facilities over time, right? That's the essential question when it comes to 21st century learning, spaces and environments as they're often called. Do you want me to go through this, or would you like to?
Oh, please go ahead. I don't have any history on a lot of this. Do you remember what we were doing in 1987? I don't. This is, I've mentioned this a board number of times, and just to give folks context as to where we have been, where we are now, and where we're headed in the future. Batavia Schools has a long history of educational facilities planning, and the original Facilities Commission, or as they called it retrospectively, Facilities Commission 1 was convened in 1987, and it really looked at the renovations for Storm and Gustafson Schools. And then it continued, and went to building the middle school and initially the initial expansions of the high school and on down through. Where we are today is that we really don't have much in terms of master planning. All the, basically, the master plan is completely what we have, and that's why we've been talking about this for the last few years. We don't anticipate that we need to build a new school certainly, but we have to take care of the ones that we have. And as I've mentioned a number of times, as best I can tell, this will be the longest period without any substantial construction in the district since the 1950s in Batavia. And that's a long time to go, right? Facilities that we've invested in, many hundreds of millions of dollars over the years, they require maintenance, and they also require improvements to meet modern educational needs. And so that's why we asked DLR Group to help us with this process, because it's very, it's very intense, as you'll come to find in the layout of the entire process.
So we have a five-phase approach to this endeavor, and right now, we are in the midst of concluding Phase 1, which we call deeper understanding. This is really foundational information for all of us. Us as DLR Group, you as a district and your community at large, really understanding from a number of different perspectives how you might compare your facilities to their peers. Not newer facilities, but their peers. And so we'll talk a lot about that. We also spend a lot of time doing a lot of in-building activities, which is an important way for us to understand from the folks who live and use the facilities what it's really like versus us just coming in at a surface level and understanding in a snapshot for a day or a week, whatever the time period might be. So our process stakeholders moving forward is generally in these three categories. Primary users, these are our students, our teachers, our administrators and staff. Core team members, which is in the midst of being formulated, the core team, and so we hope to have our first core team meeting coming up shortly. And then, of course, there's the community, and they are, of course, everyone else and every one of you as well. And so these groups will have different roles throughout the process. How they engage the information, what feedback they're able to provide us, and how that influences the direction moving forward at each, each important milestone.
Jason, could I interrupt for one second?
Sure.
And give that core team update. So that is the team that is going to be committing maybe 120 to 150 hours over the next year or so. And we did have quite a few community applicants. So today, we emailed the community team as well as the staff team. We had staff members that volunteered as well. So that team has been set, the email sent, and we hope to have, they've all been inviting Sue to attend those meetings that you're going to hear about this week, and also our first official meeting will be June 17. And the board had, we had talked about at the plan, the plan meeting will have a board member attend each meeting, but have it rotating so everybody can experience that those meetings.
So a board member.
A board member rotating in.
So where have we been thus far? I want to talk tonight about some key activities. You see a list here on screen. I'm going to go through them individually, so I'm not going to spend time explaining the list, but there's a number of key activities which lead us to our upcoming meetings this week. The first one is what we call listening tours. And this is an opportunity for us to visit with folks in an hour-long timeframe, for folks to come in and share what works and what doesn't work about the buildings. It isn't necessarily, you know, I'm missing an outlet over here. We're more broadly looking for insights into the facility and its functionality for them. And so this is also an opportunity for them to ask us questions. What might we foresee in the process? How might we participate along the way, those kinds of things? And so it's generally an opportunity to familiarize, and then for us to get some great insight for things we can't see if we just walk around on our own. Next, we'll talk about a day in the life. This is an important activity where we spend time in the classroom. And so our staff members, our professionals, are their shadow students or spend time in a specific class, depending upon the grade level and the appropriateness of that approach. And so it allows us to chronicle a day, to take the perspective of a third grader or a seventh grader, or whatever that might be, and understand what it's like for them in their class setting. How much time do they spend in any one activity? How are they grouped? What are the kinds of things that they're doing? How do they transition from space to space in the building? How long does that take, right? These are all things that go into, you know, as sort of students of function, how do we as architects and planners understand the facility's functionality? This is one way we do that. Where are the impediments and where are the opportunities? What works really well? This isn't necessarily about finding things that don't work, this is about really understanding the things that work well. And so the time scale here is a day, so our scope for this Phase 1 was 25 classes, shadowed or observed, for a day. So that's our, that's our scale and scope.
Can I just guess what the breakdown of that was? I know you were at the high school, where you were at the middle school.
We were at all.
Every school.
Okay. And here's a photograph of something that we saw, you know, a lot of group work, a lot of variety and diversity of activity happens throughout the academic day at a lot of levels, and that bears out in the data. And then we complement that at a longer time scale with a week-long activity log. We seek volunteer teachers to fill out a log that does exactly what we do while we're in the classroom. So it takes a chronology of activities and place throughout the course of a week. And so we received 49 volunteer logs, which is a tremendous response from your teachers who have come and helped us have that foundational understanding of what you're doing today. And so just an example of what that log looks like, and you can barely make out those words at this scale, and I apologize for that, but it's broken into different sections, all looking at percentage of time. If you haven't heard me say it yet, you will hear me say it often, "Time is the largest determining factor in building size and functionality." How you use a facility on time scale, how you implement school, is the biggest predictor of how well it functions and how big it needs to be. So when we break these activities down, we're doing it as percentage of time, a week scale in this case. Physical traces, this is a technique. Think about this as kind of putting puzzle pieces together for us architecturally. This is an observation technique. We notice and record what we call physical traces, or what's known as physical traces, as evidence about how a building is being used, either differently than it was intended originally. So we might see, for example, a doorstop being utilized to prop a door open. There are a number of reasons of why that might occur. One of them might be a ventilation challenge in the room. They might be seeking to get fresh air, these kinds of things. We're looking for these indications that something, as it was intended from a design perspective, isn't working for how it's currently being used. So we take a look at those. Indoor environmental quality. We take a two-pronged approach to determining indoor environmental quality that is both quantitative and qualitative. We actually measure space through devices. We measure things like airflow and lots of different metrics, which you'll hear more about Thursday and Friday. The list is actually on screen. And then we also survey the folks who live in the space for us to learn more about their thermal comfort, their visual comfort in the space. And we compare the two data sets and look for correlations. We also had the opportunity to spend time with students as a part of our indoor environmental quality metrics. You'll see some photographs of warm bodies on the lower left. We use thermal imaging as a part of our analysis to understand energy utilization in the buildings. We'll talk about that in just a moment. But students also learn about why we log what we log, the data that we capture, why it's important, and what research says about it. So it's an educational opportunity and one that we love to do, and so the students love to take pictures and see how thermal imaging works.
And Mark and his staff, they moved the measuring devices around to all the rooms.
And Mark and his staff, they moved the measuring devices around to all the rooms, taking the CO2 readings and those type of things. So that was hopefully an educational experience for them as well, and understanding how that all fits into the picture.
So when it comes to energy, we measure something called EUI, or energy use intensity. And EUI is a key metric, you can read at the bottom there. But it generally is an indication of energy performance at a broad level. It's not an energy model, it's not a detailed analysis, but it is a broad level. So a snapshot on top on that bar chart, you can see high performance on the left, low performance on the right. The Illinois Schools' average EUI is 53 and Batavia is 55. So that's a really good thing from an energy perspective. You're right about average where you are in the state. We see a wide variety of, depending upon the facility age and its condition and the mechanical systems, we see a wide variety, but generally speaking, you guys are right on track. So let's talk about next steps. I've mentioned now a couple of times, our upcoming meetings this week. Here's the agenda for what those meetings are. I want folks to have an understanding of the kind of information that they're going to get, which is the process findings I've just outlined. In addition to understanding that they're going to have input to give us during these sessions. So we do a process overview, as I've just done. Audience polling is their first chance to provide some high-level input about what they believe. And then we take them through some data, and then we have some exit polling, if you will, and see what they've learned through the process. At the very bottom, you'll see two bullet points. The first one says three bold ideas. We asked them at the initial outset of Phase One, what their ideas might be for the district for improvements. It can be large or small. We just call them bold, not to imply a fiscal or magnitude scale to them, but just to say, what are your bold ideas? And then we do a series of live FAQs for folks to ask questions either about the process or something that we've found through our Phase One work. And then we answer those with the district's help, of course. And then, of course, detailing out all the things that we had found throughout the process. So it's an exciting time. It's a time that we hope that folks take the information and keep it in a folder and come back to it as we go through the process as a reference if they have a question about any one of the facilities, at least at this level. And so with that, I open it up to questions from you all for this evening.
Did you say you're on par on where you're at compared to when you've done other school districts? I mean, of what you're getting back so far? Has the cooperation been there and anything else?
And in fact, I've referenced the activity logs. That's one of the highest levels of teacher volunteers we've had in activity logging. So we're getting very good response from folks. And as was mentioned earlier, it is an intensive process, and there's lots of ways that folks can give insight along the way. And so we're grateful for the participation that we've had so far.
Did you say that's the biggest surprise so far is the participation?
Boy, having done this so many times, I don't know if there are a lot of surprises anymore. But I am encouraged by what we've seen in the facilities, by the welcome that we've been granted, by the folks that have participated and come and given up their time already. And so I'm excited about the next steps.
How many people do you usually have come to your community meetings? Is there like an average that you can expect, or is it just all of you?
Unfortunately, there isn't an average. It is all over the board. We have strategized to have two meetings at different times of the day in hopes of capturing different subsets of the community that may have availability night or morning. And so that's why we're strategizing that. You know, I would love to see a large turnout. It just varies tremendously from facility to district to district. It has been, you know, anywhere from 25 to 125.
And we are recording Friday morning session. So we can hopefully, you know, through the social media and whatnot, continue to push that out over the next 30, 40 days. Or even, I guess, in the Phase Three, Four, and Five, they could always resort back and catch up or whatever.
As was mentioned with the webpage, there's an opportunity to post and have it be persistent and available for folks to come and visit.
I have questions, but I hope they're going to be answered by Tony.
See, great answer. That's what we're hoping for. We won't put the teaser out there.
I have one question. Am I able to get a blank copy of the weekly activity log?
Sure.
Whole picture of the screenshot, you can read?
One that I could read, yes. You can screenshot it all you want, I'm not going to be able to read it, so.
We can absolutely provide that to you.
That's everything. Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you. That was awesome. Super excited.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just for Thursday and Friday.
What are the times? Can you just say those again?
Six to eight on Thursday night, May 23rd, and that's at Rotul. And Friday, May 24th, 9:00 to 11:00 a.m., and that's right here at our Jack.
We do have two items for action tonight on the agenda. The first one is the approval of the stop-loss insurance contract. We'll throw that to Tony.
Yeah, so last month, when the board approved a series of contracts for our medical insurance, dental insurance, station insurance, all those sorts of things, amongst them was a stop-loss insurance contract. And being that the school district, the school board is self-insured, we purchased reinsurance just in case of catastrophic claims. And that contract that we had presented to you and you approved was through Optum. Now, Optum didn't give us a very good renewal compared to prior years. Initially, their renewal was over 100% in terms of the premiums over prior year because there were three individuals who were diagnosed with very serious conditions. One of our new, our new, not one of them, our second and new insurance broker, Group Alternatives, aggressively marketed the proposals for stop-loss. And we were able to find one from HM Life Insurance. And that is significantly cheaper, even in a worst-case scenario, than the one they approved with Optum. So we can terminate the contract that Optum hasn't actually started yet. We can terminate that at no cost, so there's no termination penalties or anything of the sort. And we can move to HM Life Insurance. And it will save anywhere between $250,000, $300,000, even in the worst-case scenario. So a significant savings over what we had approved prior. So that's what we're recommending to you, is that we go with a stop-loss insurance contract with HM Life Insurance, because it's going to save us a heck of a lot of money.
That's one of the points, Tony.
As I said, do you think Optum will come back with a different number when they've been put on notice?
We worked pretty hard to get them to where they were. And I don't think we're going to, you know, we'll consider Optum in the future, but for this coming year, I don't see how they're going to be able to beat the price that HM has offered.
Are we on a timeframe on this one? Do we have to have it approved by a certain date?
Yes.
Do you want to say it?
No.
Or you don't want to say it?
Yes, today. And as the case, and the reason why we want you to approve it today is because if generally, these are time-bound, or the more information that they have available, then they go and dig into those claims and then they might change their prices. There's a chance that they can revise their prices downward, but usually they revise their prices upward based off of more data that they receive. So we're asking that you approve this.
And Tony, I know there were some concerns when the board brought on Group Alternatives, but this is the exact purpose why we brought them on, correct? Because we thought they would be more aggressive in finding us some better alternatives?
Yeah, and tangentially, not directly related to the stop-loss insurance contract, but the insurance committee met last week. We heard proposals from both Vista National and Group Alternatives. And there are very different strategies and approaches to our plans and the design of our plans. And it was, it was a really interesting conversation. Steve was there. I'm encouraged about the options that we'll have, that we bring to you hopefully in September, October timeframe when we do our next open enrollment.
Hopefully.
We could bring them earlier. Well, I'm just telling you, we're bringing, we're definitely bringing options. The question is exactly which month they're going to be able to bring them to you. That's the hopeful part. So there's no question that we'll be bringing you in the design. Thanks for pointing that out, Steve.
And I think that's important, because I've been hearing regular comments from board members that we are very, very concerned about the cost of our insurance. And of course, we would like to offer the best insurance possible, but I'd like the idea of being creative and having options rather than just continuing to do this, is the way we're doing it, because that's not working for us anymore. So that's heartening. All right, any other questions? Then I would entertain a motion to approve the stop-loss insurance contract with HM Life Insurance Company in the amount of $559,008.
So move.
Move by those, second by baby bond, fall in favor? Any opposed? All right. Next time, is that you also, Tony?
Well, I'm going to need some help with this one, so. Mark, give you the rundown on furniture.
All right. A little background about furniture. So I'm in the district role. I'm completing my fifth year. And I think it was probably eight to 10 years ago, probably more like 10 years ago, that there was an elementary plan for furniture. And furniture was purchased and that plan kind of stopped. So I came into the assistant director role, and we started talking more about furniture with principals and on this role. And really, the excuse had been, well, we're going to do a Facilities Committee. And as Chris has been on the Capital Projects Committee, we've heard that a lot. So that same excuse has been kind of going from year to year with principals. So during the, not the current Educational Facilities Plan, but before that, when we had our Facilities Committee, we did talk about that, but nothing ever came. We talked about 21st century, and we never really finished it. So as the years have gone on, furniture doesn't get any newer when you have the amount of kids we have in this district. And, you know, they're not always the nicest with the furniture. So we do have some classrooms in our district that the furniture is in need of replacing. So with this opportunity, as far as now having DLR and looking, you know, getting teacher feedback and administration feedback and, you know, community feedback, one of the things is about flexible furniture and needing to replace that furniture. When that's going to happen, you know, we know when this is supposed to end here in about a year. But the actual funding for it and long-term, you know, I think Tony would be a better one to answer that question. But in the meantime, I talked with elementary principals and middle school as well, just to kind of look at the differences of principals using some of their building money to get some furniture. And so what you get is different furniture throughout the district. We have six elementary schools. Obviously, we want the same experience for all those kids, so part of that is furniture. So I worked with those principals to come up with, you know, more of a what really would work for that. And what the opportunity came is, in working with DLR, reached out to them for the rep they use for furniture and things that could come about at the end of this plan. So we worked together, came up with four different options as far as, you know, you have your intermediate, your primary options. And then I left it up to principals to, and each principal, I think, did it a little different. I didn't get into those details, but to select a class to use. I know some, literally so many people wanted, they just drew from a hat to select that room. So we came up with different designs. They chose those designs, and this is what I'm presenting you with tonight. And really, it's a way to have not only, you know, it's not all students, but some students and some teachers to give direct feedback from the furniture in front of them, hopefully getting a step up when we do, you know, when, I don't know exactly the phase that comes in, but one of the phases where that's discussed. And why there's an optic seat number, we haven't really gotten to all the specific details. You know, this was more of, you know, kind of see what classroom, you know, where that cost is. And with different options, you do have some different costs depending on exactly what type of furniture you have in, you know, that first-grade room to that fifth-grade room. And there also is a sixth-grade room on here as well. So hopefully, a little background information more than what you have in front of you that you run about.
Can I ask a procedural question? So we had items on the consent agenda that were 288 projectors and wireless add-ons that are well in excess of this $100,000, not to exceed. Why does something like this end up in a vote outside of the consent agenda when we spent so much more money on a consent act?
I can answer that. The consent is for things that the board has discussed previously. Usually, that would be--
So ongoing--
So the projectors was a two-year plan that you did discuss, and it was, it came to you through the Capital Projects Group Committee. And it was a year or two of a two-year plan. So it wasn't a surprise because we talked about it last year.
That's for those at home, too.
Yeah, exactly. And so this is something that came up that didn't go, wasn't originally on that Capital Projects plan. So since it was not part of the plan, we haven't discussed it before. Then we usually put them separately.
I double-checked it with Lisa this morning, the same question in a way, just to refresh my memory on it. And Tony came in and we talked about it because I have a little objection to the furniture part, but the projectors and that was an ongoing thing, and that's going to be universal when the DLR project gets undone, I believe, can be there. So where my concern is, we brought in this architectural area with DLR to get all this input in and all this, and then we're going to spend money on furniture, hopefully. And I understand it's a pilot, but I'm a little concerned on spending the money right now. I'd rather hold off on that to see what we come up with for any kind of flexible seating and anything else. Because, you know, the one question I asked when DLR was up here, but the pros to everything was people speaking up and was opinions being heard and all that. I think that's a process for furniture and everything else for the 21st century and everything else going forward. So I have a hard time with this right here. And I'm pretty much on the border, I'm going to vote no on this, just for that reason. And I'd rather see what comes out of the whole findings before we start putting any money in. So I understand your background on it, and I understand that. And I've also been in education for many years before I retired, and I just know we just may do with what we have. As long as it's not a safety concern, what I would have, then it would be a no-brainer for me. But I just think I'd rather see our effort, focus going here and then putting it in a final product. So I just want to give you where I'm standing on this, and I'm going to vote no on it just for that reason.
So Mark, I have a couple of questions. I'm probably leaning a little bit towards where John is right now. I have a couple of things. I mean, you began the presentation by saying we haven't had furniture replaced, and it's been on the to-do list for over eight years. And I wasn't a fan of this big movement, because my concern is putting the word out to the community that we're going to start spending money that we've made very clear as a board that we don't have at this time. So I was hesitant putting together this group and whatever. So, but this isn't solving the eight-year problem at all. It's, they're prototypes, it's examples. So the teachers and the principals and the furniture that needs to be fixed after the last eight years is still there. We're just going to set up example rooms, right?
Well, they'll actually be using it, so--
But just, nah, not the teachers or the principals who actually, I mean, the furniture that's bad is not being replaced. It's just sample classrooms will have this furniture in it, correct?
No, there will be eight classrooms, eight actual classrooms that will have this furniture. And so if, let's just say it's a first-grade classrooms going in, that furniture is better than others, it will just be repurposed to other rooms. And so basically, the furniture that's in need of replacement will get replaced by kind of looking at all the other furniture that these, this furniture will take the place of.
Okay, so what happens if we didn't do, I don't know what the board's vote is, but what happens if you don't have the board vote for this, these samples? What happens then to the furniture that needs to be replaced?
It doesn't get replaced.
So this, this is going to replace the eight years, that you're saying?
It won't replace all of that. I mean, this won't, and it will improve what's currently there.
And really, what-- There's like, when you go onto a classroom, there's a number of desks in there and varying conditions. They're also designed for different grade levels. But we take out the worst of the lot, and some of them are pretty bad, where they're, you know, putting holes in kids'--
Right, no, I understand that.
So we would pull out the worst, we would decommission those and get disposed of them, take the best that are certainly reusable, redistribute them across the school, and then put new furniture in one-- put new furniture in one particular classroom in the school and do that district-wide. So there's a number of pieces of furniture that are just not really usable anymore. We could get another year or two out of them, we certainly can, but there's some that are in very rough shape.
So kind of what John said, I mean, we're just starting these focus groups, so isn't this something that maybe we should wait and see? I mean, we just started this process.
Or is there a data collection value out of these prototype classrooms?
I see this.
And that's what, that's how I took it. I knew that furniture needed to be replaced. And really, it's, instead of doing the piecemeal of, you know, each school kind of doing, oh, we have a little extra here, we're gonna get a few new desks, you know, maybe 15 or whatever is in chairs. And then what you get is, is you get six different types in all building instead of having kind of more of the uniform approach. And so, I mean, yes, buildings will, and I'm trying to get more of like the district instead of each one kind of doing their own thing.
So it's not gonna be universal furniture? It's gonna be different types and we're gonna, there's gonna be feedback on who liked what?
Correct. So there was different options.
So the purchased, the furniture that's being purchased is not necessarily gonna stay in the classroom then? Because what happens if they don't like what's in one building, but they really liked what was in another building, so we're gonna go with what was in the other building?
Well, most of this furniture can be grouped differently. It's a lot of flexible. It's just, it's showing, the examples show it in different arrangements of the furniture. So, you know, obviously, in the fourth, fifth grade could look a little bit different than the lower levels. So you try to obviously state, you know, the K2, 3, 5. The variations is not a lot. Like variations would be, you know, sitting lower to the ground compared to a higher type table compared to standing. So instead of having your traditional 25 desks in a row, same height, same chair, same everything, there is the flexible of like six different types of formations of, between tables and chairs and desks and different storage options and, you know, even taking teachers' desks out of rooms because they're already out. Most teachers are taking their desks out and removing them. So instead of kind of teachers doing things already on their own and bringing, I'll just leave it as different types of furniture in the classes, this is more furniture that is for classrooms.
Wouldn't it make sense to do any kind of, have some of the staff go to different districts that have some of this flexible, just to get an idea instead of spending the money?
Sure.
And that way, you know, we're not spending money and then all of a sudden $50,000 worth of that furniture we're not gonna use because of how the whole focus group came out, that that doesn't work and then...
I mean, I, again, I...
Can you explain, Mark, again, that process of how we picked, who was involved?
So who was involved is, is since I reached out to these gentlemen and asked, when you go through this process, you know, you have some furniture vendors that come in and that you use. They sent me the information, we met together, kind of came up with ideas, got the different options, because my thing, they knew exactly what we were doing. My thing was, is I don't wanna get furniture that's, you know, not the norm for other schools. I wanna get something that we know is gonna be used. People are using now, you're moving towards that direction. And that's exactly what it was. That's exactly what they brought in. And again, it was more of to choose these options and see what's gonna work. This furniture, if you approve it, will be used again. I mean, it's not gonna be, it might be used in a different, you know, formations and different places, but, I mean...
It isn't gonna be discarded. But this is also, as I understand it, a pretty common approach for how you guys look at furniture at the DLR group? Like, you guys do a lot of pilots in the very same manner as what we're recommending here, is that true?
Districts often elect to leverage pilots before they make a large investment in any kind of change, right? It's an opportunity to, to examine the functionality and usability of space. And I would say most of the time, what Mark is saying is accurate, they keep the furniture and use it. They may use it in a different type of class or they may use it in a different grade level from, you know, let's say two to three or something like that where there's, you know, some age commonality. But yeah, it's quite common, especially as furniture ages out, you know, as you described. Now, it's not something you have to do, but it's something, if you have to spend the money to fix broken furniture, do you wanna spend money on what you already have, more versions of that, or do you wanna try something else? And that's where the, obviously, the tension lies for the group.
Well, I think that's where we kind of got to, having, you know, putting this committee together, is seeing that our schools needed work. But I guess I still am concerned about it happening this quickly. I would have expected something like this to come to us a little bit more down the road when we had really dug into the research, the group. We just started this process. So I guess I would look at it as, I'm not saying it doesn't need to happen, I'm not saying I'm not 100% for it, I know our schools need this work. I'm just, I think I'm a little thrown by that it's happening now and this is coming to us now. I don't, what is the harm in waiting until we've kind of dug into this process a little bit more and had community members more involved, like we...
Why would we want community members, just out of curiosity?
We built a team because we built it, we already put it together.
Right, but for furniture. I mean, like, I, they...
Then why are we putting this whole thing together if we don't want the people who's committee?
Because I think you're the whole visionary piece, but I actually assume that...
You missed community. I said community members in the wrong way. We have a committee put together that includes community members, correct? That Lisa said she just invited?
Okay, right.
Right? So that, would we not want that, their input since they volunteered to...
I wasn't imagining they were gonna go pick up the furniture. I mean, that was not what I was...
No, I didn't accept that either, but I would have assumed we would have maybe waited until we had a little bit more time spent and seen what they were doing. I personally feel that this is coming quicker than I would have thought. Not saying it's not a good idea, not saying it's not something, but...
I guess it's not replacing everything since we know we need to replace furniture. It's a question of, do we wait three years?
Well, you never said three years. Tony said the stuff could still, the stuff we have could probably last another year or two.
Right, but we probably won't be funding the results of the master plan for at least three years.
But this isn't really replacing everything, this is either prototypes.
Right, so I think they're trying to converge two missions here and trying to make the best of two not ideal situations. So we have furniture that, I'm assuming the reason why we're having this discussion is that we have furniture that really needs to be replaced. We also have a project going on that's just fired up, that's going to help us try to identify what the classroom of 21st century looks like. We have an opportunity to possibly replace some furniture that needs to be replaced while getting some prototypes that will be evaluated by our teachers and students in the classroom that may help us evaluate what we might go to at the end of the DLR project. So I mean, it's, but you can slice it 1,000 different ways. Because I could ask a really hard question, do we honestly need to replace any furniture right now?
And that's actually the question I am asking. I just didn't think this was happening right now.
Let's replace $35,000 from the furniture instead of 100 and be done with it that way.
But I think the, the community part is, you're changing basically how education was taught for so many years that everybody is so familiar with. And you're talking about a 21st century, different area. How is that going to look? And then in some places, in like the incubator room and a few others, you do have some different setups. I think the community has to understand, how does that correlate to how academics is gonna work and improve? So I think when Tina is saying the community, I agree with that. I think you have to educate them to a degree, just as some teachers and so on. So I think that, they're not gonna go out and pick the furniture, no. That's, that's Mark's...
No, I mean, we want the community's input.
But we want input on how do they think couches or these chairs or this and that. I'm just thinking, yes, this could wait, maybe wait a little longer so we have a little bit more understanding, like Tina's saying. I'm, I, I've been on the fence on this, I really have been. And I told Lisa that. So I'm, I'm gonna just vote no. I don't know how anybody else is voting. And if it passes, it passes and I live with it.
I see this as research. And we're getting use out of it, but I mean, I...
I saw this replacing furniture that was worn out.
Placing, right. But then we're getting these new prototypes of furniture and things like that. And I'm, I don't wanna assume anything, but we are going to study it, ask opinions and things like that. So to me, this is a research component of the overall what we're doing.
Which I completely understand. I guess I didn't think this group was gonna cost, I didn't think as we put this group together, it was going to cost us money as we went along. I thought we were waiting for the finished product and then making decisions based on that. If I misunderstood, I misunderstood, but that's what I, that's what I thought. I understand why it's happening, I just didn't think already we were gonna be adding more money to this project. So that's where...
So can I...
Can I just say one more thing?
Go ahead.
Then I'll be done. As my role on BFY, we, I would say, and Eric, at least a third of the grants that we receive from teachers, if not more, our requests for furniture. BFY as a whole has decided pretty much not to fund those anymore. It's not, there is an educational component to it and there is research that shows different seating affects different children and things like that, but a big portion of the requests we're getting.
And our PTO is funding a lot now, too.
And the PTOs are funding it, too.
And donors choose.
Right. So it's, it's out there and, you know, there's different things already in the schools. And I think having an entire classroom where it's just six chairs that have been replaced in a, I think it needs to be done on a whole classroom level, which BFY has never been able to do really for the grants.
And again, I just want it to be known, I'm not saying this does not need to be done. I would replace all the furniture right now. I have no, I would do it in a second. I did not understand the process, it could be my bad, but that's why I'm asking questions. I understand the need, I understand all of that. I didn't expect this in regards to this whole new building our future to come right now to the board, so.
So I guess I feel like that we all have sort of this different understanding. So Tony, can you put it in the clearest terms? You can. What furniture are we buying? Why are we buying it? And how much do we really need?
What furniture are we buying? We're buying mostly desks, that's the primary count. There are some other things like teacher desks, teacher stations and some other flexible furniture that would kind of fill or complement a classroom along with some storage aspects. So the purpose is to not just buy a couple of random things, is to kind of outfit a classroom and see how all those components fit together and make a more flexible learning environment and moving toward those 21st century learning practices. I don't think it's a switch where you just like turn it on or off, it's definitely a progression and moving in that way. To be honest, I don't, I can't say that we need all of it because we don't necessarily need a bookcase, but part of that bookcase and how its shelves fit in with these desks and, you know, you can pull the trays out of this desk and put it into a particular in and out of bookcase, but like a shelving unit, they don't necessarily need one, but they all fit together in different components. If the board asked us to do it cheaper, we certainly could, you know. But there are, the reality is, is that one of the things that I'm hearing most from principals is we need more furniture or different furniture, this is certainly breaking. And we, some of these things are in a rough shape and we wanna redistribute how we allocate the current furniture in our classrooms.
If we don't approve this purchase, what happens to all that furniture that, would we just run through for another year too?
Run through for another year.
So I have a couple of questions. So if we were not going through the master plan, would you still be coming to us for furniture right now?
Yeah, principals, this was not something that we planned, because principals keep coming to us and saying, we need this, we need this, you know, it's all furniture. Not all every principal, but they're, they're all saying, we need more furniture.
So my understanding is we have furniture throughout the district that's in various levels of repair and disrepair, some of which is critical, some of which is not. However, the goal for this is to replace the critical furniture at each level by taking all of the bad furniture, putting it in one classroom, replacing it with this new furniture and distributing the rest of the okay furniture with the rest of what's there.
Yes.
So what is the average life expectancy of furniture?
Well, I know that some of the desks, like the desk that my son uses has to be older than me. And I'm turning 40 tomorrow, so, pretty old.
Okay, so potentially what we buy could be around for 40 years. Okay, I'm, I'm just trying to kind of get my hands. And as, putting on my architect hat, if, we kind of have two choices of, we can make our design decisions based off of what we're living with currently and by visiting other schools and seeing what we have, or we could build a couple samples, experience what we have plus experience those other samples and live them and teaching them and see how they function on a day-to-day basis, but we would have to spend some money now, money that we would probably have to spend to replace furniture anyways at this point. Is that correct?
Yes.
So basically, we have to decide whether we want to have those extra rooms in place to experiment with and learn from while we go through this design process, which I would think would be beneficial because we can actually live with them, touch them, move them. Or we can choose to save money now, come up with more of a finished design and then go through this process later. Is that where we're at?
We still might have to buy some desks.
Right.
I mean, that's what I'm wondering, is if we decide to fund, are we still going to have to replace some desks?
I mean, was it really on the agenda to bring that to the board or is this just coming to the board now because of this whole procedure? Were you really going to come to us and ask us to replace furniture this year, right now?
That was not part of our plan, but it kind of materialized and I think it fits into what we're doing. And so we probably would have, if, no, if we hadn't embarked on this process, we, I fully believe that principals would have come to us and said, hey, we need, you know, better furniture. And we would have done that anyway.
Well, they've been doing it for eight years.
Right.
Right, so over the past couple of years, we've replaced cafeteria tables, we've replaced, you know, foyer seating and stuff like that, so, I mean, it's gonna happen.
So about the months of February, March timeframe, I know Tony goes around and meets, has budget conversations. I do the same thing with principals with, you know, basic general facilities. And it got to a point where it was funny because I could tell if they met with Tony before they met with me. Because Tony says, well, I'll talk to you about furniture type, you know. So those conversations were continuing to be had more and more. And I think part of it too is, is yes, the furniture is, some furniture is old, and I think another one is, is teachers are wanting to kind of move, you know, past the traditional and into that. And really what's happening, and you guys talked about it a little bit, is it's getting funded by others kind of here and there. I know, I hear from principals from, about, from PTOs and really I get them across my desk because I have to sign most of them immediately for the BFY grants. And I'm not seeing, as you said, I used to see a lot of different types of furnitures and it was the chairs with like, you know, the bounce, kind of bouncy ball type thing and, you know, so kids can, you know, as they're jodiri, might as well, you know, make something for that. So I'm seeing it more and more and more. And really, as what Tony said, I think the timing was just, it just really there. Because we spend a lot of our summer kind of looking at this as furniture's getting moved out and back into rooms and spending August trying to put the best 24, 25 desks together. And, you know, unfortunately, sometimes you have to just, you know, put nuts and bolts and screws through the top of a desk to hold them together.
But this is not going to fix that. There's still gonna be, they're gonna still have to nuts and bolts and screw desks together. This is not taking care of that.
Not taking care of all of it. It'll take care of some of it, but not all of it.
How many, we'll be able to get rid of the worst of the worst.
Yeah, and here's a question even, and maybe Tony, you can't forecast out this far, but I'm not imagining even if we have this grand perfect plan that details everything that we're ever gonna replace all the furniture, why?
I highly doubt we'll have the cash to do that.
Oh, okay. That's what I was...
It would be something that we embark over a period of years.
Okay.
And then it will be in the consent agenda because it will be...
Thank you, Bob.
But to Tina's point, I do completely understand that, you know, we have this core team, we have the building our future together, and it looks like we just snuck this in under that umbrella when really it is, or what Bob explained, where we had two things and we're trying to converge them, but it does look like, you know, we, hey, here's this furniture plan, but it really isn't an official plan, it's a pilot. And it wasn't, and it didn't run through of any of those systems that we're building right now with the core team. So I understand that.
How many classrooms at the middle school and how many classrooms at the elementary school? It just says elementary and middle school, doesn't say...
Middle school and seven elementary.
Did all different buildings, you said?
Yeah, all different.
So which building gets two?
There's a team at AGS that is doing some innovative things that wanted to, both team members felt like they wanted to have the opportunity to do that.
And related, and now the thing is to spread the options. So, but the one thing I didn't, I told principals, you might not get your first choice because I didn't wanna have all of the same types and the same grade levels and the same ones. So it worked out for all of them, so.
And it sounds like one of the problems that we're trying to solve is teachers filling their classrooms using outside sources from the district. Is that something that we as a board need to have a conversation on or...
I think once we have a master plan, both in terms of our vision and then also in terms of our financing, that will go a long way. terms of our financing, that will go a long way so that teachers don't have to scramble. I think there's, there will always be some of those more innovative along, you know, toward the fringes, you know, ideas and pilots and experiments that teachers will always want to do that we're going to probably seek funding for. But the mainstream stuff, the mainstream stuff that we're trying to make sure that every classroom has access to, we're going to build a plan that gets us there over a period of time.
Mark, when teachers bring furniture in, I know you sign off on things like the BFY grades, do you have to sign off on those ad hoc like PTO? Or we kind of don't have that?
Yeah, I should, but it doesn't always prevent everybody. And really, when it comes up, this is, you know, usually at the beginning of the year in September when we're doing the visits with ROE and, you know, the look, I mean, it has to be fireproof. It really shouldn't just be a couch coming in because what's coming in with it, you know, if it's not good in your house, why are you bringing it into school type of a thing? It really should be surfaces that you can clean easily. You know, really, it's a vinyl type surface that you can just wipe down. So that is what, you know, I'm bringing today. And really, it's, it's one of those things where teachers, you know, they want to try to do different things in their classrooms and bring different things in, and, you know, it's hard to say no to it because they're trying to do something, but then it senses like, well, no, you really can't have that type of furniture in your room. And some of it just, you know, the different spots they're buying it doesn't last as long either. So this is actually having furniture that's, you know, from a manufacturer that has warranties and things of that manner.
Is the DLR group assisting you in picking out this furniture so that it fits into their next steps, or are you?
Yeah, this was a company that DLR uses.
But are they going to tell you, like, based on what their plans are, this is what they'd like to see in the classrooms, or are you just kind of going off? How are you picking out what to buy if you, if they haven't given you their ideas yet?
Well, this is the same, well, this is the same company that they use in, you know, other districts that went through the exact same one. So as I worked with this company, you know, they knew exactly of like, okay, this is exactly what's being used in, you know, these different grades and to give different options for that.
So if moving forward, this is the company we would use as we, this plan comes into full?
It could be, but really at that point, you kind of get into, you know.
A bid?
Well, more than likely you're going to, yeah, not necessarily because this is all through the government co-op anyway, so it's already been vetted. It could be the company, and I'm guessing that, not knowing, that DLR probably recommends more than just one company, but.
They recommend companies.
Right. So this was just one that was recommended by DLR.
Well, can I, can I throw this out again as, I would say, a procedure possibility or something? Because I'm thinking about this more and more to, after deciding vote. I understand part of the research and all that. Is there any way we could, and again, I don't know what the vote's going to come out, but is there any way we could maybe put this on hold for a month?
Yeah.
And maybe we can see pictures of what this furniture is supposed to look like, diagrams. And so we have a better understanding of what you're kind of talking about, the difference on the standard furniture we're having now compared to what you're looking at in the future, to move things around, to do this and do that. I don't know. Maybe it might help me understand this a little bit more than just putting out the money right now and doing the research that way. And again, I don't know what the vote is. I don't know if we can wait a month. I don't know if that would help. It might, it might solve me as a vote one way or the other. I don't know if it'll do anything with anybody else.
Yeah, we need to order pretty much as soon as possible. Because if we don't, the furniture won't be here until the start of school. But we can wait too, and then just do it after the school, after school starts.
You can always surprise them one weekend. You get new furniture. There it is.
I've done that before.
I mean, that's, I'm just throwing that out.
So let's just throw a quick informal poll of the board because I know John always would feel more comfortable if he had another chance to think about it. Ready to vote or wait?
I'm fine either way.
Ready to vote or wait?
I can go either way.
Okay. So are we comfortable that, to make us all comfortable, we can wait and put Mark in the position of possibly delivering furniture after the beginning of school?
Can I say some really unpopular things right now?
Um, yes.
We've taken procedural votes on things that disrupt our entire educational process. We've just basically spent 25 minutes, they're in $100,000, and we'll possibly push back putting new furniture in classrooms a week to two weeks after class start at the elementary level, where transitioning is really difficult in the first place, and we're going to introduce brand-new furniture to them over a weekend that will disrupt the classroom for another week.
So truly, Bob, you were saying that we should vote on it tonight if we're going to.
I'm saying that it should have been part of the consent agenda.
You know what, I'm going to say, I'm going to say then let's take the vote tonight and see if they're going to be a yes or a no, and then we have a definitive answer moving forward. That sound fair? All right, so I would entertain a motion that the board approved the purchase of classroom furniture from Frank Cooney Company in the amount not to exceed $100,000.
So moved.
Second.
Move by Beatty Bar, second by Locke. Let's do a voice vote since we already know that, or, I mean, a roll call vote, please can't be since we already know that there are some people.
Uh, Beatty Bar.
Yes.
Laker.
No. Drummond.
Yes.
Gaspar.
No.
Locke.
Yes.
Low.
Yes.
Meister.
Yes.
Passes.
All right. There you go. That was the last item for action tonight. We will need to administration comment.
Just indulge me if you could, one last comment about Sue. Thank you so much for all three years. When you think about the district communications, for those of you who've been following them, prior to five years ago, it was very, very different style, and I just thank you for giving the district personality through all of your stories and just all the different methods that you use, and lots of people singing your praises. Like, I get so many compliments about Sue on a daily, weekly basis, and even right before this meeting started, I got a nice compliment about you. So you're definitely going to be missed. You have brought the communication so far, and just the community's expectations are rising everywhere. It's not just the Batavia community, but people have really high expectations for how we communicate, so there's always room for growth. But you have just really brought us so much farther in the five years you've been here than it was, you just have made so many improvements, and I really appreciate that, so thank you.
And you've been a great workhorse.
I know. She's so sparkly. And then I do want to thank our, or welcome our newest, Holly, Holly Deitchman and Carrie Rosen.
Remembering all that down.
We did a focus group for communications, and, you know, when you, when you're hiring a new position and you're, and it's very difficult because you want to list, like, I want this person to be everything to everybody, and so we actually asked them to prioritize. Erin was part of that, a couple of the board members were there. And we asked people to prioritize what is it that we're looking for in a new communication manager? And it's interesting because these are things that Sue exemplifies, but then when we had our finalists, Holly was, we read it and we're like, oh, they're describing Holly. And it was basically somebody who could, you know, communicate in a variety of ways and somebody who's a positive champion for Batavia and Batavia schools. And so they're both that. And the other is, you know, those of us that are in education maybe sometimes forget that not everybody is in it as much as we are, and we sometimes don't communicate at the level that we should because we think everybody's on the same page. We have so many acronyms and so many things that we're doing. And both Sue and Holly had, didn't have that educational background, but are excellent communicators, and they're going to be able to, you know, Holly will be able to continue to translate what we're doing to, and broadcast it out to a wide variety of people. And she's a lot of connections in the community. So thank you. And Carrie, I'm going to talk about you for a second too. She's been in the district for quite a while, maybe six years now. She started as an assistant principal, then assistant director for student services, and then one door, one door closes, Lisa Palacy left, we, another one opens, and we're so, so, so happy that Carrie is doing this. So thanks, Carrie, taking over. You guys both have good shoes to fill. That's it for me.
Thanks, Lisa. John, gas, fire, you want to start?
Right. As always, thanks to everyone for all the information that we get for pre-grad, graduation. Congratulations to all the seniors for tomorrow night at the ceremony out at Northern. Be safe, please. Thanks to everyone here at RJAP. Thank you, Mark, DLR group, Tony, you know, for all your information. Again, I want to thank Chris, even though he's gone now, I wish him well. And again, congratulations to Sue. I just want you to know that I read all your Facebook pages, tweets, Instagram, snapshots. What else have I missed?
Instagram.
Whatever, whatever you put out, I'm going to miss them. So it's going to break my heart. So I, I'm sad to see you go, and I hope you have anything to read at night. Congratulations to Holly.
Oh, yeah.
And Carrie, congratulations, as I said, big shoes to fill, but I know you can handle it. I know you, you've been very good at it the last six years. You came in basically when I got on the board, so I've seen you go up, and I've been very impressed, and I, I wish you well, you know, so. And Lisa, we will miss her too, so congratulations. And for anybody that didn't know, I was just joking about all that other stuff because I had no clue what.
Really?
The district MySpace came.
Oh, MySpace. I forgot about MySpace.
You should.
I forgot about MySpace. Hold on, I should get my phone out.
Snapshots.
Oh, my gosh. So that's the demographic that we communicate to.
Hey, you're looking at a guy that does paper. You can see all those.
All right, well. Um, congrats to all the grads tomorrow. Super exciting day. And to go to everything you said about the promotion you hires, very exciting. Welcome, Sue. I have to say, when I first came here, you were one of the first people that I met, and you really impacted my involvement within the district. So I haven't shared that with you before, but you will be missed, and I know that you will stay in contact here in Batavia, so.
This meeting is always a very interesting one because this meeting is a lot about transitions. And Todd, thank you for the way that you addressed our student ambassadors tonight and talked about how teachers see them from the time they're tiny. My daughter graduates tomorrow, be my last one in the district, last of three. And this district has been really good to the Beatty Bar family, and hopefully.
Beatty Bar family's been pretty good to the district.
Thank you. But hopefully the other families out there feel the same about this district. You were the first communications director, is that true? The first modern communications director? With all the hot shots and whatnot, snapshots? But anyway, I feel like you brought maturity to that role, and it's been really cool to be there while you've been doing this, and it's exciting. Transitions are always exciting, sometimes scary, but exciting too. So it's going to see how, going to be interesting to see, and great to see how this position evolves and grows. Thanks to everyone for everything, and let's have a great graduation to transitions.
Awesome.
Well, I'm going to, again, Sue, wish you the best of luck. Do you mind saying where your next adventure is taking you by any chance?
Yeah, I'm going to be the communications and programming person for the Living Well Kinsel Research Center in U of M.
Very lucky to have you. I'm, tomorrow is one of my favorite, favorite, favorite days in the district, and especially being a board member. So I'm really looking forward to tomorrow. I also have a graduate. But I wish all the graduates a great day tomorrow, and staff and administration who are going to be there, a happy early birthday to all of you. And a good rest of the school year and a safe summer for our students and teachers and faculty.
I will echo what everybody to the right of me said, and also say it's been just phenomenal watching all of our athletes perform over the last couple of weeks. I had the honor of seeing.
That was your quinn right in you the last night.
Yeah, my son did rather well at state, and so did all of his teammates. The eighth grade boys took fourth in state as a team.
Quinn took.
Quinn, my son, took second in the mile and second in the 800, and then the four-by-four team took seventh, and they were ranked 21st going into the race.
Ooh.
Which was pretty impressive. The girls' four-by-four eighth grade team took sixth, so they did better than the boys. And we, I, we had numerous other participants that were down there that did really, really well. It was just, it's such an amazing thing to go down there and see them perform at such a high level with such pressure, and I know that I could never do that. So, and I also know that we had the girls that were down for, at state for the high school, and following them on Twitter has been amazing. And I believe we sent a tennis player also, which has been fun to watch, so.
Two tennis players.
And I believe the boys are going down to state this week for track. So it's been fun. Looking forward to graduation tomorrow.
I really have nothing that hasn't already been said, so by the time it gets to me. But congratulations to all the graduating seniors, and Holly, welcome. Sue, Carrie, thank you for everything, and good luck to you. Good luck to you. Anyways, be safe tomorrow, and congratulations.
I mean, the year's always pretty good and sweet, but lots of exciting things going on, so it's hard to be too sad, especially since graduation hasn't happened yet.